Um, and he's like one of the people who like saw like, well, I think he saw a lot of potential in me. And wanted me to be a co-host on his show, and I was so nervous. I was like, I don't know why he selected me. But um, I'm so happy to be able to learn from you, um, to sit down, um, where you live and just have lunch with you and get to know you as a person. And your impact over decades, I think speaks a lot. I hear people who worked fifty years ago, twenty years, thirty years ago, so you're, you have made impact um, on people on all, from all age ranges. Um, so I just want to say thank you. I appreciate you. I'm here, um, in supporting the work that you're doing. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember White.
When I said the great, I meant it. This man is a legend. Many of you know it. And I was, and I'm so honored for him to be here tonight because officially, he's the oldest person in chambers instead of me. But as Councilwoman Cabrera said, if you had any aspirations of politics, or business, or community, this was the person. And he not only helped you mold your vision, he taught you how to do it. When other people were traveling to get lessons, Twin would say, "That might, that connection, that connection, be on point." When I read this resolution, everything in here is about Twin. That success, that progress, that dismantling. It wasn't easy for him to do what he did some twenty, thirty years ago. I had a TV show, and I'm gonna make it quick, I know, it was called Real Estate in, Real Estate Today. And I had a co-host, Mr. Sam Els, and I was scared as all get out. The program was supposed to last thirty minutes. Well, nobody gave us the cut, so we talked for an hour and a half. Twin added that down to thirty minutes. So, I, I want to just say, truly appreciate your contribution to black media, to community, to entrepreneurship. And enough cannot be said more than thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera?
I just wanted to add that our own Jacenia Taveras from City Council is one of the workshop students. And it's through her work with Twin, when she wanted to go into this field, she was one of my Miss Hispanic Delaware contestants. And I referred her to Twin. He needed help. She became one of his best, wonderful, bright students, which we now have seen her work on WITN, the awards that the city of Wilmington has won nationwide because of the work that this young lady has done. She is a direct product, as am I and so many others here who have spoken of this gentleman here. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that right before our eyes is another one of his students.
Uh, so that there aren't too many times where you can really point to, to, uh, to one person who has been responsible for just being a game changer. But Twin is absolutely that person. There, there would be no twenty-eight without Twin. I know he's, he would give, you know, accolades to people around him who helped him, but he single-handedly made Channel twenty-eight relevant to the city of Wilmington, and especially to the black community in, in the city of Wilmington. Uh, this probably forty, forty years ago, maybe longer than that. But I know that he went out and he had people get subscriptions to Comcast, I'm not sure if it was Comcast back then, it might have been Rollins. Yeah, Rollins Cable, just so twenty-eight could be relevant. And there are very few politicians who, who are from the city who have not been on Channel twenty-eight. So, we all owe you a huge thank you, uh, just for everything that you have done. Like Councilwoman Cabrera said, you have mentored hundreds, probably thousands of, of apprentices to just, to continue your work. So, your work will always live. So, I just want to thank you. And it was funny, so I was asking people, you know, who could we bring in to recognize? And then there were doctors and lawyers and all types of people who, who deserve recognition. But then someone, my mom, mentioned your name. I was like, okay, we got them. We got, we got the person because you have just, you have done so much for our city. And I, I don't think that people really under, I think Councilwoman Oliver said that we stand on your shoulders. But I don't think that we really understand, a lot of us really don't understand what that really means, how, how true that is. Because it just, there just would be no twenty-eight without you. So, so thank you for your vision. Thank you for all of your time, and thank you for your love.
He's still a smooth dresser, ain't he?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he is.
Always best dressed.
Uh, also, we have a recognition for, uh, Dr. Julius Garvey, uh, son.
Council President?
Uh, yes, Councilmember, I apologize. Councilmember Brigida Fields, you have some comments for, for Twin?
Yes, I do. Um, I don't remember, I mean, well, I am a little bit. I remember Comcast and Rollins Cable, but I don't know if everybody remembers when he was in the, um, he was in, in the, um, at Hicks, what was Western City then, in the basement. And he had his room down there. And, um, being in, for the summer, being a summer job, you would have to be, you know, one of his, being in his room would be one of the jobs. And my daughter, Tabria, um, who is a videographer and who takes, um, pictures now, um, and does very good with portraits and things like that, she had to take his, she, that was her summer job. And she did not want to go down there. She was like, Mom, she went upstairs and she cried to my Aunt Trotter. She said, "I do not want to be down there in the basement. All the other kids is doing this and doing that." But she now has, she's an entrepreneur. She has her, um, her own, um, videography called Humble Vision. So, you know, without him, you know, she wouldn't have never picked up a camera. She wouldn't have known how to develop a film. So, um, you know, I, I just thank him for, for years and years from when I was a young lady. So, I'm not even gonna tell how old I am, but I remember going down there in, um, by Ms. Olivia's room. Cause his room was right next door to Mr. Olivia's room, which was the, um, the kids', um, the kids' room. The teen, not, not even a teen now, the kids' room. So, Mr. Twin B, I really appreciate you, and I thank you for all that you've done, um, in the community. And, you know, thank you for giving, just putting my daughter in the right direction. She didn't even know at that age where she would be going today. But now she's on, she's on social media. Um, Bria shot it. She, she has, um, pictures that she sent from here to, um, California and other places of different artists, when she went to different, um, concerts and different things like that. So, thank you. We pay homage to you, and I appreciate you. Keep doing up the, keep giving up, doing what you're doing. I appreciate you. God bless you.
Thank you. We also have recognition for Dr. Julius Garvey, son of Marcus Garvey, who visited us a couple of weeks ago in our library. Also, from Councilwoman Oliver, we have a recognition for Michael Cardy on his retirement. And as far as sympathy resolutions from all of council, of course Bishop Aretha Morton, and from Councilmember Oliver, a sympathy, sympathy resolutions for Richard Hale, Mary Black Smith, and Elizabeth Henry. At this time, we will move into public comment. And as a friendly reminder for anyone who would like to speak, there is a Google Form signup link in the chat. And your timeframe is three minutes. And as you're called up, please introduce yourselves. Uh, first, we have Ryan Dunlap. If you come up to the podium where the honorees were speaking, please. And please watch your step. Please remember to introduce yourself.
Uh, hi. Um, yeah, I, I was on the impression that, um, there would be, uh, a vote on, on the CCRB, on the Civilian Complaint Review Board prior, and I was gonna comment on that. Were new in the area and, uh, wanted to, to, to learn more about this and everything. Um, the only comment I can actually make, um, is based on information that might be old at this point. Um, if there is consideration of putting retired police officers on this review board, I think that completely defeats the purpose of civilian oversight. I would not like to see that happen. Um, and yeah, I think any, any officer who, uh, thinks that the police should only be accountable to themselves is not a public servant. And, uh, so as a new resident of this area, I would want to oppose any retired officers being on a, uh, or you call it a citizens complaint review board, correct? Yeah, that's it. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Priscilla Sermaine, Sermaine. And please be careful when you approach the podium, and please introduce yourself.
Hello, President, councilmembers. My name is Priscilla Sermaine.
I'm sorry, please try to move the mic down just a little bit.
My name is Priscilla Sermaine. I'm a resident of the city, uh, in particular, um, of the second district. And, um, I have, I just wanted to come and just speak to all councilmembers, um, just in reference to, I don't always get to make the meetings, but I do have a chance to go back at later time and review, uh, the recordings that are posted. And I really wanted to just come and state that, um, in the beginning, none, none of us are perfect, and I get that. Um, we have voted, we have elected councilmembers of our districts or other districts to come in office. As a resident of the city of Wilmington, um, I have viewed through a number of different platforms , um, disheartening acts amongst the seats in council. And I deemed it not robbery today to exercise my voice. I've viewed tantrums, I've viewed blame games. Um, I have viewed in some instances what even could be viewed as hatred, um, toward one another. Um, the last, um, session, or not session, but the last, uh, I'm sorry, there was, the, the last term, um, it was chaos. And it seemed to be pretty quiet in this term, and I'm very proud of each and every one of you. But I do feel like there are instances where, um, some of the, the, the behavior has become embarrassing, not only to council, but I believe that it can, it's also embarrassing to those who have taken the time out to vote and who has entrusted in, uh, the people that we have voted in. And I just want to ask on behalf of myself as a resident of the city, for everyone to just understand and look in the mirror, and that we're not perfect. I get that you all aren't perfect, but let's not have another term like last term where it was consistent headbutting, consistent going against each other. They mentioned Aretha, uh, Morton, who we've recently lost. We have lost some great, um, people of our city who were leaders. And I think that sometimes we may need to sit back and look at what our elders did and how they had a respect for each other and how they worked things out within each other, without the chaos, without the havoc. If there is havoc, there's no room for servicing our city. We're taking up too much space and blaming others and having temper tantrums and being unjust to one another and unkind to one another, when we have so much going on out there that could use a lot of that energy that we're using. And I just wanted to come out and say that because, um, I admire a lot of the councilmembers. And it's just, again, it's, it's disheartening when I see a lot that's going forward, or a lot that I hear. In addition, um, I'm just asking everyone to understand and just go back and remember why each of you ran to be in the seats that you're in. Each had a desire to service your community and to be of assistance to your community. And if the havoc and the negativity is filling the air, or filling the space, or filling any time that you have with the energy, then how much is really left to do, what your initial hearts desires were set out to do? So, that's what I'm asking as a constituent, as a resident. When I go back and watch the videos, and I'm sure others, we don't want to sit and watch. We want to sit and figure out and watch how you guys all come together and figure out ways to make our city a better place. And that's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that we do not have anyone, uh, virtually who signed up for, uh, public comment. Is that still correct? WITN? Okay, thank you. At this time. Okay, Brandon Fletcher. Yes, come on, come on up.
Thank you, Council President. Um, only three minutes, but there's a lot to talk about on this agenda. Um, but I'm just gonna talk about something that, um, has been on my mind, and I've spoken to a few councilmembers about. Um, and that is getting the city to enforce existing laws that exist, um, that are in the housing code, um, that just aren't working and aren't functioning, um, in a way that could help protect the health and safety of renters. As we saw last summer, um, in May at Adams Street, people were evicted from their homes. Twenty-seven families displaced. And they didn't have an option or alternative with the city to put their money in an escrow account to help prevent the homes from being condemned, because the city has the power to enable that process, to pay for the repairs to be done and made, so that people can live in a safe, non-condemned home. Um, and so I think that we should begin as a city to start thinking about, how do we get the administration to enforce existing code? And so I support Councilwoman Darby's HB thirty-seven, um, and I think it's an important bill. But I don't think it's necessary if the city of Wilmington has the power to, um, put, and has a rent escrow program in which they can actually use the, uh, the rent in the account to make the repairs if the landlord refuses to. Um, it's in the code. So, um, I would love to talk more with, uh, the Chairwoman of the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee, um, to see how we can enable that process. Last week at the committee hearing, we saw firsthand that there are people who need safe housing with children, but they just don't know what alternatives are there for them to have safe housing. Um, also, um, there's another bill that is being heard about vacancies. Uh, I think it's a good bill, but, um, the city can already cite violations and give civil fines to landlords who don't fix them. Um, they have the power to identify issues and request landlords to fix them. And if they're not fixed in thirty days, you can fine the landlord two hundred and fifty dollars a week for every code violation. Um, and enforcement on that also seems to be uneven. So, um, there's a consistent pattern here, I think, and it's the city not enforcing their existing laws. Um, we have to think about what leads to homelessness, what leads to housing insecurity, and it's all of, uh, all of this. And I encourage you to vote on that ordinance, I mean, on that resolution, but also to think about how you can encourage the administration to enforce existing laws.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will move into legislative business. Councilmember Darby?
Yes, um, Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-three zero-one-one, Agenda zero-two-seven-seven, whereas Wilmington City Council wishes to express support.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question?
Yes, Council President. Um, so tonight, this resolution is simply about supporting HB number thirty-seven, which is, um, a legislation on, on the state level looking to, um, enforce or amend, um, and provide more protections for tenants, um, when they're dealing with landlords who will not fix, um, issues in their home. So, this act allows tenants to bring an action of rent escrow to pay rent into the court. Um, so it allows them, um, just an option, a alter, um, alternate option to being able to deal with issues they're having with their landlords, um, with repairs that aren't happening. I just think it's important for the city to support something like this. As one, we already have an escrow account, but I think it's wonderful if the city of Wilmington, um, residents have more than one option, right? They can go the state route, um, hopefully use the court system to pay the rent in their escrow, or they can go through our city program, um, which is already, um, supposed to happen, but we're not doing it. Um, so hopefully, we can enforce that soon, um, so that our residents do have that option also. So, simply, this resolution is in support. If, um, councilpeople want to support this legislation outside of, um, saying, uh, sending this up to the General Assembly, they can contact, um, their state legislators, um, and online, if they go to the website, there's a list of legislators, um, that are on the Housing Committee. Cause right now, it's in the Housing Committee. It needs seven votes to get out of the Housing Committee, uh, for it to move forward. And I just think this is just an important piece of legislation, just to strengthen, um, our housing here in the city of Wilmington, which we, I don't have to go over the issues or problems with our council, cause we all know, we get the calls, we see the homes, um, and the people who are being impacted. Um, so I'm gonna leave it for any, um, comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Uh, I want to be added as a cosponsor. Um, this is a bill that I've, I've been tracking as well and encouraged to see in the General Assembly. Frankly, I wish it had more support. It's, I believe it's only three cosponsors. Um, it's so, uh, I guess the easiest way to explain it is that, um, landlord-tenant court in the state is completely messed up. It needs to be overhauled.
Councilman Johnson, excuse me. Can you speak into your mic, please?
It's, it's completely messed up, uh, landlord-tenant. And so I think besides this, there's many other reforms that need to be made. Um, and for me, I compare it to up the road in, in Pennsylvania. Um, there's a lot more protection for tenants, this, just in general. Um, and there's even a right to counsel, you know, there, there's a lot of issues that we need to be supporting, and, and I know that's come up. So, um, I think however we can advocate and pushing it over with this part of our housing stabilization package, it needs to happen. So, very good. Thank you for bringing this to the table, but we got so much more to do, especially right to counsel. That is first and foremost, um, even if it's not a licensed attorney, even law school student, someone that can assist people, because it's very difficult in Delaware especially. Um, so I'm hoping that passes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Darby, any closing comments?
No, I'm just, again, um, I would love to see, um, support from the community. Um, contact your legislators, let them know that you want this to get out of the Housing Committee. Um, there are, um, community advocates, housing advocates, through the Homes Campaign, Network Delaware, um, um, the, um, the Urban League, who are doing the, um, grassroots work to get this legislation out of the committee. So, contact those, um, organizations, contact your legislators, let them know that you want to see this get out of committee. This is gonna help the whole state, and more specifically for the city, more Wilmingtonans, so that we have, um, just livable housing for people here. So, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White?
Yea on the resolution.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
No.
Councilwoman Fields?
No.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
No.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Seven yays, three nays, and three absent.
Declare adopted. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present, another one.
Resolution twenty-three zero-zero-one, as amended revision one to Agenda zero-two-five-nine.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question?
Yes, um, thank you, Council President. Um, so this, um, legislation or resolution is to, um, just appoint people to our, um, fees and fines task force. It was established back in October, um, just a few months ago. So, we're just tying up loose ends so that we can get the work started in regards to, um, reviewing some of the work that has already been in the process, being able to collaborate with communities, city council, and administration, and looking to propose new ideas around fees and fines reform.
Seeing no hands raised, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White?
Present.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
No.
Councilwoman Fields?
No.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
No.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Five yays, three nays, two present, and three absent.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, five yays, three nays, two present, and three absent.
So, I'm gonna need help with this one.
No, it's not, it's not the count, the council.
Excuse us, please. Okay, thank you. I declare adopted. Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution, uh, to present.
Resolution twenty-three zero-twelve, Agenda zero-two-seven-eight, whereas City Council enacted City Code Section two-dash-two-three-two, establishing procedures for the Chief of the Wilmington Police Department to call for the commencement of an academy class if the manpower of the police department falls below ninety-five percent of the number of police officers set forth in the position allocation list attached to the annual operating budget ordinance for the applicable fiscal year.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second on the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea and a nay vote on the question?
Yes, Mr. Um, President, this resolution, um, is for the City Council to rec, to recognize the Chief of Police Department to represent the manpower of the police department has fallen below ninety-five percent of the number of police officers set forth in the position, um, to attach fiscal year two thousand twenty-two annual operation budget. Ordinance has drafted a resolution calling for commencement of the academy class of the police department.
Thank you. And seeing no hands raised, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White?
Yes, on, on the ordinance.
Councilwoman Darby?
No.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays, three nays, and one, and one nay.
Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present.
Excuse me, that's, oh, nine yays, one nay, three absent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Declare adopted. Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a, a resolution to present.
Resolution twenty-three zero-thirteen, Agenda zero-two-seven-nine, whereas pursuant to Section two-three-six-three of the City Code, City Council deem it necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review and approval of city sponsored grant applications and proposals, including authorization for expedited grant applications when necessary prior to council's approval by resolution.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question?
Yes, Mr. President, this resolution authorized Wilmington PD grant application for the state of Delaware of safety and homeland security for the funding of first aid and local law enforcement grant operation in amount of sixty, uh, six hu, sixty, uh, thousand two oh two. Posed a grant fund that would be used to cover costs for advanced specialized training for police officers. There is no matching funds required. It's just grant money.
Thank you. Councilmember Darby?
Yes, um, so with the advance in specialized training for the police officers, what does that entail?
Mr. President, we discussed this in the, um, committee meeting, and I'm not gonna go back over it again.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Darby?
Yes, thank you. So, um, publicly asking questions, and they can't be answered. Um, that's.
It's in the synopsis.
But I'm not talking to you, so you can't talk back to me. Uh, you didn't get your chance. You didn't get your chance, so. So with this piece of legislation, I was trying to make a conversation for the public. Everyone can't attend public safety meetings, go back and watch them. I got questions about it as a councilperson prior to this meeting. However, I will not be in support of this legislation in regards to accepting this grant, not saying if they need the grant or not, but there are conversations that need to be held, that have not been held with the police department, and I think it's irresponsible to keep allowing them, to keep coming, to come to us to accept these grants. And they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing in regards to doing the external audit. There's no Public Safety Director for a proper oversight, the Civilian Review Board. You have this, there's no Community Response Team. So when they're, when they're ready to come to the table and implement those things for police reform for the city of Wilmington, then I'm willing to say and look at these grants and maybe say yes, but for right now, it's a no.
Councilmember Johnson?
So, you know, this is very complex. The Police Department and Criminal Justice Reform, as I do agree with Councilmember Darby, that enough progress has not been made. There's ordinance we've had sitting on the table, reforms that were promised to protesters in 2020, and still have not happened. I agree with that. But I think we have to look at that we do have a new chief, who was recently installed a month ago. So to those reasons, I think we do have to give him opportunity. I know I've had those conversations with our Public Safety Chairwoman McCoy about Captain Campos, and we've all worked with him on the West Side. We're very hopeful, he's already talked about specialized community engagement units, and a lot of other reforms even he's been in favor of from years ago. So, I do want to give him a chance. I understand what happened under the last chief, and frankly, that was unacceptable. But I think under the new chief, we have to give him a chance. I've already, I've been public with the disgust for these grants, and how they always have money for these kind of programs, but they don't have money for community response and police alternatives. I certainly get that, but I think this, unfortunately, this is in a pipeline. But I think in terms of budget negotiations right now, this is on the table when we talk about these. So I welcome Councilmember Darby's sentiment, and I think we do have a path forward. I do believe in our new Public Safety Chair, Councilmember McCoy. As I know, she is equipped and ready for the job, and I think we're going to have a lot different budget this year. So everyone, stay tuned, thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes, Mr. President, I do agree, there's more that needs to be done. And I do want to echo Councilmember Johnson's comments that we do have a new chief, and I believe that he's off to a positive start with some of the diversity that he's already brought into the leadership. There's a lot of people within the police department, rank and file, that feel confident in his leadership. And even in the community, he has been well received. And I believe that our request and the request of the community is not going to fall on deaf ears. Yesterday, most notably, I was reading the press release and sharing with some friends. I said, you know, this is the kind of chief that we have, where he took police officers and staff members to the Museum of African-American History during Black History Month. How is that relevant, one might say? Well, the chief feels that having the diversity training and all these other things, that's all well and good. But that doesn't mean that you're learning about the history of a people. And sometimes, you know, you have a city that's sixty-seven percent African-American. Our officers are not as diverse as we would like them to be. Just today, the mayor was sharing with me that as people have been promoted, that there's a whole line right now, that we don't have any African-American lieutenants to promote to the next level. Or maybe it was sergeants going into captains. The point is that we need more recruitment, we need more people of color, we need more people who look like the community, who understand the community. But I applaud that these little things, and maybe this grant would pay for something like that, like that field trip, to take people out and to learn about the very people and their history that you're representing, because not everybody knows this. We take for granted that people know, but they don't. People tend to be ignorant in many ways. So I am supporting this, because again, anytime we get free money to be able to support our workforce, be they the police, the fire department, whomever, we shouldn't say no to that, considering our budget constraints. But I am hopeful that we're going to make some positive changes, and like Councilmember Darby and others, we will hold them accountable.
Thank you, Councilmember Bracy.
I just want to say, I agree with everyone, everyone's sentiment. I think we have to be at a place of yes and yes. We can accept this, these funds to help with training, and we're going to hold you accountable. Yes, we want to support the police, and we want to support the new chief, and we're going to ask questions, and we're going to continue to meet, and Councilwoman McCoy's committee is going to hold your feet to the fire. So I think we can do both, and I think it's our responsibility to do both. It's to really make sure that we follow up. So yes, we approve this today, but then it's our responsibility to make sure that in ninety days, we have a check-in with Chief Campos. In a hundred and twenty days, we have another check-in, so that we are not just saying the police needs to reform, but we're also doing our part to make sure that there are reforms with this new chief in place.
Thank you. And you are very optimistic, and I love your optimism, Councilmember Bracy. And I do, I do want to give the chief a fair chance. He is new, and he has a, he has an extremely community-oriented background, and he has done things that no other chief has done in a few short months that he's been chief. So I do want to give him an opportunity. I'm not going to give him or the police department many opportunities. I do feel exactly the same way that Councilmember Darby feels. But just based on Chief Campos and his history of doing the right thing, I am going to give him this opportunity. Probably won't happen again, so I hope that he and the, and the police department understand my seriousness, and hopefully council's seriousness. And I do look forward to the public safety meetings that Councilwoman McCoy is going to chair. I know that she will not shy away from any topics, and she will allow us to have the conversations that the community wants to have and that council members want to have. So I'm looking forward to that, too. So I'm going to support this this evening. But again, it's a very short, hopefully it won't be a short-lived exercise in patience, because I do think he has an excellent opportunity to really be a hero in our community by doing what's right. And he has, he has done that. And I hope that he has the courage and the support to continue to be a game changer in our police department. So I am going to support it again, but I am going to hold him and the police department to a very, very high standard if this ever comes around again. Because I don't think that we need more police. I do believe that we need more funding invested in our youth, in our communities. I think Wilmington, I'm pretty sure Wilmington is in the top four or five officers per capita in the entire country. I think there are only three cities over fifty thousand, with a population of over fifty thousand that has more police officers per capita than us. So it's not really the police officers, I think it's, it's a lot more. And I'm just ready to have that conversation with him and the administration and our legislators in Dover. Thank you. Clerk, Councilwoman Oliver, any closing comment?
No, yes, I wanted to, I wanted to say thank you, Mr. President. When I was going to say you hit it on the nose, I just plan on giving the chief an opportunity to prove himself. Look, I know the police station, you know, I have a lot of concerns when it comes to the police station. But if you have a grant writer, a grant writer over there that's giving, getting money for the police station, it's free money, it's no matching funds. One thing I'd like the public to know, it's no money coming out of the city's, city of Wilmington's resident's pocket. So I'm too optimistic about the chief, and Councilman McCoy will have, we've been having conversations with him, and he stated the last meeting that they are looking into some other grants. But with that being said, I'm not going to beat a dead horse. And I would like to make a statement that these committee meetings are online. I've taken the time to go back and look at several of them. So I don't want to hold a committee meeting over and over on council, because once we come to the floor, sometime we have time to talk to each other. So no disrespect to anyone, but I'm not going to reinvent the wheel when it's already in the synopsis. With that being said, could we please call for a roll?
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
No.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays, one nay, and three absent.
Declare adopted.
Mr. President, I have another resolution to introduce.
Resolution twenty-three zero fourteen, Agenda zero two eight zero. Whereas pursuant to Section two-three-six-three of the City Code, the City Council deem it necessary and proper to specify the requirements for review and approval of city-sponsored grant applications and proposals, including authorization for expedited grant applications.
I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and a nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, this resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or a nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this resolution authorized Wilmington PT grant application to the state of Delaware emergency illegal drug enforcement program for thirty-two thousand nine twenty-five point sixty grant funding, which would be used for support drug investigations, and no local matches funds are required. And I would like to say, this is in here, when you're talking about drug investigation, they just found, what, like fifty, I don't know how many millions or pounds of fentanyl over in, over in the South Bridge area, and this is a type of funding that would be used for something such as that.
Thank you, Councilmember Darby?
Yeah, just to clarify, it's to support specialized drug investigation through covering overtime costs. So this is a grant for, to cover for Wilmington Police Department for their overtime for the specialized drug investigation. It's not just for that entity, but specifically it says overtime in here. But I do want to add, when I speak of police reform, I don't think of really individuals. So I'm not thinking of, when I say these things, like attack, or thinking of Chief Campos. So I definitely hope that he's willing to be more community-oriented and do some reform within the department, because I think of what we're fighting is a system, right? And I think even with people, and good people in systems, systems still need to be reformed and challenged. So for me, I'm going to continue to vote no until I see that the system and that the people within the system are willing to change. I'm going to wait to see the change before I am, before I am persuaded to say, yes, I agree with them getting grant money. I just don't believe in continuing to increase sums of money into systems of law enforcement that has always demonstrated an inability or unwillingness to change. But I hope that Chief Campos is able to do the right thing, and I'm watching. And I hope that he does the right thing, but that was all. I don't want it to be like a personal thing, it's not on any individual police officer or on a chief of police. It is just for me, it's a system that just has to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
I think it's important that we do set the right tone of counsel. Again, it's not, we have to be supportive of public safety, and that's the way I like to approach it, is whatever means we look at public safety, public safety isn't just police. Public safety is lighting in neighborhoods, it's making sure people have enough food to eat and rent, can pay rent. So I think we, in a council, we're getting there, but looking at justice from a higher level, that it's economic justice, it's environmental justice, healthcare justice, there's so many injustices. That is just in a state, you know, lack of healthcare is great, leads to other challenges, can lead to crime, and that leads to needing police. So we're looking in 2023, we've talked internally with council. We're looking again at the big picture items, and trying to get resources to the communities that need it. So, you know, you'll hear about police, but really, justice and safety is bigger than police. So that's the way we're approaching it. I know council president supports that vision, but that holistic vision of safety is what we're focused on.
Councilmember McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to note that the thirty-two nine twenty-five is basically overtime, yes. And it's only a portion of overtime. They've already made us aware that they're going to be, they're going to be looking at other grant opportunities to make certain that we don't have to go to our budget when it comes to overtime. I've had conversations when it comes to grant opportunities. I've made them more than aware that I'm looking to deal with issues that deal with our social ills and what has basically contributed to our criminal element, not just the violence of shooting and things, but things like, you know, the drug addiction, the prostitution, and things of that nature. Those things are basically, you know, those can be diseases, or like I said, social ills. Those are the grants that are a little bit more competitive, they are not just state grants. So they are aware, they know where I stand, and I'm like, I just wanted to make certain that rather than me talked around me, I am the chair now of the Public Safety Committee, and if we want to have conversations about this, I'm definitely open to have them.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, as Councilwoman McCoy stated, and Councilman Johnson, when you start talking about public safety, I mean, it's all over the nation, you got all kinds of ills. I mean, social services, resources, I mean, lack of health services, homelessness, I mean, it could go on and on. So, you know, Wilmington PD, not just Wilmington PD here in Wilmington, but throughout the country, you just see, it's, they have issues all over. So as I stated, and I will always state, if it's no matching funds that will not come out of any citizen's pocket in the city of Wilmington to try to protect us overtime, et cetera, with no matching funding, I'm not going to be mad about it. I'm looking, I'm just glad that they, I mean, I know with this, it was some overtime, they took all these guns off the street on the east side last week. Whatever the police can do to try to protect our city, you go to some other cities, and you come back home and you'd be glad we live here. So with that being said, could we please call for the roll?
Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
No.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Nine yays, one nay, and three absent.
Declare adopted.
Final, final reading of the ordinance, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-three zero zero six, Agenda zero two six eight. An ordinance to authorize and approve the First Amendment to Contract twenty-three zero zero eight WDPS Water Division Building Raceway and Facilities Management and Maintenance Services between the city of Wilmington and Merrick Construction Engineering.
Mr. President, I move this be known as enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea and a nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, this be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and called for a yea and a nay vote on the question.
Yes, Mr. President, this ordinance authorizes the city to enter into the First Amendment contract with the Water Division Building Raceway Facility Management Services between the city of Wilmington and Merrick Construction Engineering. The amendment contains for four-year, one-year extension option for the period of.
Councilmember Oliver, please, speaking to the mic.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, for July the first, two thousand twenty-three, through June the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, July twenty-fourth through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, June the first, July the first through two thousand twenty-five, through June the thirtieth, two thousand thirty-six, fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, in July, two thousand twenty-six through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven, fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven. This is a facility, the engineer that they've been working with, who has been working with the city of Wilmington, and they have agreed to do a year-to-year contract to help save us some money.
Seeing no hands raised, clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Ten yays and three absent.
Declare adopted.
That's all, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance twenty-two zero forty-seven, Agenda zero two four nine. An ordinance to man chapter four of the City Code to impose civil fines on owners of vacant properties.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for a yea and a nay vote.
Second on the motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and called for a yea or a nay vote on the question.
Mr. President, this. Mr. President, this legislation is basically taking our current legislation, making some changes to it, such as the lower fines, uh, longer period of time to pay the fines, and also, um, a longer period of time for appeal. But what it is doing, the main thing that it's doing is changing it from criminal to civil. Why is that important and how does this benefit the city? Currently, as we see our neighborhoods that are blighted with vacant properties, those are the neighborhoods that have the highest level of crime and criminal activity. There are neighborhoods in our city that have thirteen vacant properties on one block. There are neighborhoods in the lower hilltop that have seven to eight scattered within a one to two-block area. And the people who really feel the pain are the folks that are living next to them. The city gets blamed because we're not doing anything about it. And what people need to understand is that the city can't just go and take somebody's property. It still belongs to someone, someone owns it. And they're given opportunities to do something with them. The first year that you have a vacant, you pay nothing. It's one year, do something with it. The second year, it's a very low fine, then the third year, and the fourth year, and so on. But they sit there. This specific legislation is for vacant properties that are having issues, whether it's a leaky roof that's affecting your neighbors, whether it's, uh, broken downstairs, whether it's the facade, whether it's something inside, a busted plumbing, whether it's windows and people are breaking into it and, and doing what they do. What this does is holds them accountable for keeping those properties in order so that they're not violating any of our license and inspection ordinances. So by switching it from criminal to civil, the city is able to now enact when they give a fine and the person doesn't pay the fine and continues to acquire and the fine continues to accumulate. When they get to a certain amount, it allows the city to be able to seize that property. And everybody has a legal system to go through, you can appeal. But in the meantime, instead of waiting the eight to ten months, maybe sometimes a year or more, to be able to go to court, and in many times, um, a judge might just give someone a slap on the hand and say, okay, well, fix it, pay the fine and, and move on. What does that do to the neighbors and the people that are there, living next to this property without any resolution? There just doesn't seem to be enough motivation for the people who allow these properties to just sit vacant, and they're falling apart. This isn't just you owning a, a vacant property and they're coming to get you, no. If you're keeping your vacant property up and there's no issues with it, you're not going to get a fine. This has nothing to do with those properties. This is specifically for properties who have housing violations. And that's the best way that I can, um, explain this. Take any questions or comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Uh, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Um, and this legislation actually goes back to the one oh seven session, the chaotic session that, uh, was mentioned earlier tonight. And I was a supporter of it back then, and I still remain a supporter. Um, it, it was controversial for some reason, but, um, for those who are against it, I have never walked the neighborhoods all over the city, um, that these vacant houses are at. And in fact, you know, about a week and a half ago, you know, Councilmember Cabrera, new Councilmember White, Councilmember Fields, uh, and I just walked lower hilltop, looked at vacancies. Um, we're looking in buildings, talking to neighbors. That's the stuff that a lot of members of the public don't see, that we do all the time. Um, just talking to neighbors about how the vacancies affect them. And there's not one person who, who didn't want the city to do more, and so we have to fight for them. Um, and, you know, what happened with a lot of the neighborhoods that used to be strong on the east side, on the west side, north side, where there's vacant, that, those are strong middle-class families that have been gutted. And so you talk about building the middle class and how we do that in the city. That's how we rebuild our middle class in Wilmington. We have to strengthen housing, we got to go after these vacants. Um, it is heartbreaking, you saw, we saw trap houses, we saw, um, alleyways, we saw a lot of things that trash, uh, and in front of, it, it's just, you have to see it yourself. And for those who talk or looking at scholarly books, they're not actually in a community on the streets, looking and talking to these neighbors. So for that reason, we will use every aggressive measure we can to fix our housing, stabilize our middle class in this city. And I'm for it, and, you know, look, it's controversial, I don't care. This is fighting for the community, this is fighting to step up and do what we need to do and, um, move faster on these vacants.
Thank you. Councilmember Mills.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Councilman Cabrera, for a detailed explanation of the ordinance, and I too would like to be added as a co-sponsor at least.
Thank you. Councilmember White.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. President. Uh, I too would like to be, uh, added as a co-sponsor. Uh, I thank council members for allowing this to be postponed until the present time. I did my due diligence, I read this bill about four times, I met with the administration, I met with LNI, this property, uh, does not affect homeownership, homeowners. Uh, but it is a tremendous tool in the battle against blight. I was on, uh, the one hundred block of West Twenty-Fourth Street today, Carter. If you've been on that block, you see the deteriorating neighborhoods, the vacants. Pullman Street, property on Pullman Street, roof collapsed. Again, that affects somebody. Was on Twenty-third and Jessup, blighted. This conversation could go on and on and on, I think account, my fellow colleagues can understand that. When you purchase property, you do not get all the rights thereof. Certain rights are retained, and those are the police powers. And this administration and this particular legislation is retaining those police powers. You have a duty to protect and safeguard your properties. That, that's the duty, and when you don't do it, those are one of the rights that you don't get. So again, I mean, we could cite neighborhood after neighborhood, be it Twenty-Fifth and Tattinell, Twenty-third and West, that you look to your right, you look to your left, and you see something that you don't want to live near, and you shouldn't want your fellow citizens to live near. So I support the legislation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, kind of have a statement, I had to make certain I was ready. So I've been discussing how to, we have been discussing how to address the vacant and substandard properties for more than five years now. And I'm happy to say that right now, the vacant properties are starting to decrease in my area. My hope is that in other parts of the city will have the similar results. This issue has been a go- ongoing challenge in Wilmington and even further complicated by residents' needs for safe and affordable housing. So I believe it is wiser to, you know, look at houses and try to restore vacant property, given more opportunities to own a home or rent one closer to what is considered affordable. I take my responsibility seriously to safeguard the rights of the property owners, and I also recognize that the current housing situation requires me to be proactive about making positive change. So I, after careful consideration, I will be supporting this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Darby.
Yes, I am in support of this ordinance, um, and my support goes with, um, already the prior city count, um, session, they had already changed a, a certain part of the code for these enforcements to already happen. So these things are already in place. So I'm all in support of making sure all parts of our codes are speaking the same language um, in regards to how we're, um, dealing with vacant, vacancies or any part of housing. I'm all for that. So for me, my support is that I just want the language to be congruent throughout the code and that I want to just mention that everything we're mentioning tonight to what this legislation, I guess, will do is already on the books to happen. And I don't, I can't, um, I can't speak to the enforcement of it because I haven't reached out to LNI to see if they were already doing that enforcement. Um, so I'm in support of it and the congruency, but I don't know if the enforcement will happen if it wasn't happening already, um, in regards to how we deal with vacant properties. But I am in support and I'm going to vote yes tonight.
Thank you. Now we'll go back to the sponsor for final comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, I thank my colleagues for, um, their consideration and their support. Um, I do want to comment on what Councilmember Darby, um, did state. We did have a very thoughtful conversation in the committee meeting, and the Commissioner of License and Inspection at that time, um, Mr. Starkey did come forward to explain that what was done in the previous session, uh, with chapter thirteen, uh, which is the City Code that really deals with trash, high grass, and debris, which we already deal with with instant tickets, that that part of the legislation was sent, was changed from criminal to civil. But it really has to deal more with the sanitation issues that do bring, that come along with those vacant properties. The issue that was brought up by the Commissioner is that the Housing Code, which is chapter four, that deals directly with the additional violations, that, that is the code that's enforceable. Chapter thirteen, the enforcement doesn't live there like it does in chapter four. And this is part of the Housing Code in chapter four, which is, so it's really not in the books. There are many things that are still in the criminal process with vacant versus the civil process, which is why it needs to be changed so it could all be consistent with the housing laws that we're looking at. And in the previous administration has stated, people felt that there was a lot coming to them at the same time with these changes. So the request was to take one piece at a time, and that's what we're doing. Um, inclusive, uh, Councilmember Darby has introduced some legislation as well around vacant. So we're just trying to work together to give, as legislators, I mean, all we can do is pass the legislation, give the administration the tools so that they can enforce and they can do their job and do it efficiently on behalf of our residents. And certainly, I would hold their feet to the fire to make sure that the enforcement is happening because that is a concern. Are we really getting out there and, you know, giving them the violations? Because these properties do sit around for a long time. So this is just another tool in the toolbox and, um, hope that it does get used effectively and that we start to see more of that change, um, in our neighborhoods that we are already starting to see. At the same time, it gives those people an opportunity, just sell the property, do something with it, make it a home for someone else. Um, but we understand there's, there's some challenges. So one of the things that we're talking about is also introducing ways to help the owners of these properties. Sometimes there's an issue with a deed, getting the name of the deed and not being able to sell it or do something with it. What other tools can we help them provide so that the property does not sit vacant and it doesn't become a liability? Because if they don't have the money to fix it, we understand that that's a challenge as well. But with the market the way it is and people needing homes, I think there's opportunities for people to sell those vacants if they can't do anything with it, and, uh, let somebody else make that a home. And that's it, Mr. President, I'll call for a vote.
Thank you. Clerk, please call for the roll.
Councilman White.
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Fields.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Yes.
Councilman Mills.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Yes.
President Congo.
Yes.
Nine yeas, one present, and three absent.
Declare adopted. And I am holding Agenda item, uh, zero-two-eight-one.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to petitions and communications. Councilmember White.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Darby.
Yes, I don't have my book today, so I tried to write down some things in my phone. Um, but, um, I'm so excited for the established, well, the appointment ship because it was established back in October, but for the appointment ships to happen so we can start the task force, start reviewing and, um, the recommendations that have already been, um, sent out in regards to parking reform from the mayor administration, coming up with some new ideas, making some recommendations. So I'm excited.
Councilmember, uh, we can't discuss, um, legislation during.
Oh, I can't discuss the task force, okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm excited for the work group, um, and the work that we're going to do with the fees and fines task force. Um, there's also, uh, this isn't the legislation, this is the website that we're launching with the fees and fines group, not the task force, the fees and fines group. We're launching, we launched our website, it's William, uh, it's Wilm, fees, fines, reform dot com. So if you're interested in sharing your story on how you've been impacted by fees and fines, we have a survey there. If you're interested in getting funds to, um, if you got like a boot, you got some tickets, you've been towed, well, um, we've partnered with the Friendship House, you can get up to two hundred dollars, um, towards your parking tickets or to get your t- boot off or to get your car out, um, if it's towed. Um, so I'm excited for the things that are, um, around fees and fines. Um, for housing stuff, um, I know that we've been talking about, um, enforcing like the escrow account stuff, uh, but I'm also excited, um, on finding ways to work with people in the community on providing educational resources to Wilmingtonans, um, about being landlords. Um, so we have the Landlord Engagement Lab, so we've been interacting with a lot of landlords throughout the city of Wilmington in regards to how can we improve our relationships with landlords and what that looks like. Um, and, um, a few days ago, we had, um, at the PAL Center, I want to say shout out to the PAL Center, I had did a tour with them, and they have amazing things happening there. I'm a PAL OG. When they were building the PAL Center, I lived down the street, I remember the community center coming up, and it was, um, a pillar in the community because we didn't have a community center on this side of town. Uh, we weren't walking the hicks, nobody was going over west side like north side, west side beef. So nobody wasn't doing that, so we didn't have a community center on our side of town, so the PAL Center was that. But I'm so happy that the executive director, um, Chris Purnell, is doing so much work in like capital and fundraising to do a lot of work over there, talking about a swimming pool, they're talking about retail space, um, they're doing renovations in the basketball, they have a dance room now. There's just so many things going on there, and I'm so excited to see that as a PAL kid, um, from when they first opened. Um, so I just want to give a shout out to the PAL Center and the work that they're doing over there, and that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd just like to, um, mention Aretha Morton again, how much, how important she was to our community and the outstanding job that Congo's Funeral Home did with her repairs. And I don't normally get into that, but, um, kudos to y'all. Um, next, I would like to, um, um, remind everyone who lives on the east side that we're having a meeting this Tuesday, um, the East Side Civic Association, they have a meeting down Stups Tuesday, um, to talk about the repairs, uh, external and internal, uh, repairs from Habitat on the east side. Some people, uh, know some applications fell by the wayside. But the meeting is to discuss, um, some individuals, uh, that has signed up so they can get their, the work done to their homes. And, um, we also have, um, Edie and her group from, um, Rose Hill Community Center coming out on the east side to pay people's electric and water bills. There's no way that your electric bill should be behind this, uh, this year or your water bill. They are paying water bills, electric bill alone, water bills and electric bills along with the money that the city of Wilmington, um, we had, um, a constituent who fell harsh times, lost her job due to COVID, uh, mortgage, electric bill, they paid two thousand dollars along with her water bill. And plus, the city paid the remaining amount of her water bill, so all her bills is paid up. She wrote a nice little letter to, uh, the city of Wilmington and Edie, and, um, so I'm glad to, um, give some in- good information, you always hear about the bad things. But there's plenty of money out there also with Eugene Young, with people with housing. So, uh, it's just, you know, people say they don't know what's going on, it's, and I get it, but it's everywhere. It's on, uh, DHSS website, if anybody's behind in their mortgage or their rent. I don't know about the rent now, but the mortgage is definitely out there. And, um, the water bill and electric bill. And Damar Power has money for people's electric bill. So don't just sit around and wait for somebody to knock on your door, reach out to these organizations, make a phone call, and also call social services. I mean, people call council members, and I know, I mean, we are, uh, legislators, but we do a lot of social work, but that's not our title. Feel free to call Damar Power, call the state, call, um, the Porter Center. I mean, uh, talking to Daniel, there's plenty of money out there, they just have to take advantage of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to, um, just say that I did have my hand raised up, um, when we were speaking to that last piece of legislate- legislation, but I'm good on it, as long as it passed.
I apologize.
Hmm, um.
That was a, hmm.
Okay, um, I just want to say, um, also, I would like to thank all of my colleagues on council, the ones that felt it necessary to send me some fly- flowers, um, due to my surgery last week. Thank you so much, I really appreciate your, um, your thoughtful words. Um, and I would also like to remind everyone, I, we are still working on the, um, the Pursuit to Own Home Buyers, um, Workshop. Um, we are soon to be having another, um, workshop with NACA come sometime in April. The time and date will be determined.
The time and date will be determined, but it will be in April. So I'm asking everybody now, please sign up for the, for these follow-up workshops, sessions that we have bi-weekly. We're trying to prepare everyone now to have all their paperwork and everything together. So when we have that final work, when we have that workshop in April, they can get their membership and we can fast-track them to homeownership. So um, kudos to my colleagues who spoke on the legislation saying that we, it's, it's all about rebuilding our neighborhoods. Revitalizing our neighborhoods. Um, so thank you for everyone that spoke to that, that piece of legislation um in regards to it passing. Also, on this Sunday, the twenty-sixth is the Cupid Ball. A few of my colleagues, um, they've also donated to it as well. It would be the Cupid Ball that will be held at William Hicks Anderson Community Center from two to five PM. Um, it is a senior Cupid Ball, so it is for senior citizens. Um, uh, all seniors are invited. Um, if you have any questions or concerns, the um, please reach out to Sonya Jones. The flyer is out. Um, if not, we do have a flyer at the front desk and you can call the um, you can call our, our office number. Um, what else did I have? Oh, yeah. And I, and I would like to definitely shout out to me having the only city-owned community center on the west side. Thank you for that because I'm glad that we have it. We had it. I went swimming and all of that. So, you know, I'm just thankful that now each side of um Wilmington has their own center somehow, some way. But I'm the only city-owned. And so my thought for today, my quote for today is, and I probably said this, but I'm gonna say it again because I needed to resonate. I've learned that people all forget, will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but they will never forget how you made them feel. Thank you. And Mr. President, may I please be excused?
Not yet. Thank you. You may be excused.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy?
Thank you. Shouldn't have let her go. So um, actually I have two announcements.
I heard that.
Yes, I have two announcements. Uh, one is from Wilmington Fire Department. So this is for the Fire Explorer Program. The Wilmington Fire uh Fire Explorer Program for young men and women aged fourteen to twenty. Chief Looney, uh, who's our fire chief, he has encouraged young people who may be interested in learning more about becoming a Wilmington firefighter. This program, they have an open house on Saturday, February twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, between ten AM and noon. Uh, it's going to be held at the Wilmington Emergency Operations Center at Twenty-two South Hill Street, Wilmington, Delaware. There is a number to call if you have uh more questions. The number is three zero two five seven six three nine five zero. Again, that's three zero two five seven six three nine five zero. Uh, we have another, the, that is, I'm sorry, you know what? Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna hold up your flyer. So the other, uh, the other news release is from Chief Campos. So our new chief, uh, new Chief Alfredo Campos, he is seeking applicants for our one hundred and second Wilmington Police Academy. The application period is already open and it closes on March thirty-first. To learn more about becoming a Wilmington police officer, contact Sergeant Aaron Metzner. How are you back? Okay. At three oh two five seven six three one seven seven. Or email him at uh Aaron Metzner or Aaron dot Metzner, which is M E T Z E, M E T Z N E R at C J dot state dot E S dot D E dot U S. All right. So just wanted to make certain that you're aware. We've actually put lots of posts up on our social media so that you can uh take a look at those things. And please take advantage. We do hope that someone will be uh looking and want to send their children or think about becoming an officer. That's all that I have.
Thank you.
You know what? I don't, I actually have, I wanted, uh, I wanted to have a quote too. Even though both my phones is dead, thanks, my husband. No charger in the car. The quote that I actually pulled up is basically the end of our prayer. The end of our prayer states, "Respect be key in all our endeavors." And I just want to make certain that we are um, that we're holding to that. I just want to make sure that we're actually listening to our prayer and that we're holding dear to it.
Thank you. Council, Councilwoman Johnson?
Hi, everyone. Uh, again, um, Happy Black History Month. As many folks have said, you know, it's, it's a, this is something we, we need to be studying and, and um investing in year-round, through sixty-five, not just during one month of the year. Um, and so, you know, lo- locally, I think we, we, we do a great job, but nationally, we do have a lot of issues, I think, confronting uh attacks against uh black um and, and, and people of color. So um again, you know, thank you for supporting our local um historical sites. And if we look at um going forward, we have on the west side again, we have a new round of business innovation grants um through West Side Grows. Uh, these are up to ten thousand dollar grants um to, to support our small business community. Uh, we have a diverse, uh, very diverse uh minority of women-owned small businesses on the west side. I think we probably have the most in the city. And so continue to support uh these businesses. And um obviously frequent them, but also um make sure you um tell them about the grants if they don't know already so they can apply. Because there's new batch of funding. Um, and very importantly, something that may have gotten skipped over and hasn't been mentioned yet. But um the final Wilmington disparity study was released on uh Monday, February sixth. Um, we will discuss more about next steps at next Most Finance Committee. But uh it was, it was a groundbreaking study, uh, very comprehensive study by Miller Three Consulting. Um, and we're discuss the great disparity in uh how we do procurement in the city. And that's minority businesses, women-owned businesses, um, we don't do a great job. And um the report is quite, quite lengthy. It's five hundred pages. Uh, but there is a little uh broken down summary if you just want to look at the highlights. Um, you can find the report on the, I believe it's on the, I don't think it has its own hyperlink, but it's on the mayor's website. Uh, the mayor's office website. Please go to it. Um, it's very comprehensive. We're going to be um not only um taking that report and breaking it down, but through the next coming months, we're going to be taking action steps um to make procurement more fair. Um, because as we talked about today, we talked about public safety. We have to talk about economic opportunity in Wilmington. And um we can do better. And in council, we're going to push um as a government body to do better so that we uh provide opportunity to um contractors who, who are really trying to grow and, and, and provide goods to the city. So um stay tuned for more at next Most Finance Committee meeting. I don't know if we have the date yet. Set for it as we will be going to budget hearing soon, but uh everyone, please check out that report again. It's on the uh mayor's office website. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes, Mr. President. I am going to announce an event that's happening in honor of Black History Month. And this is Reach Gospel Radio is presenting a Festival of Hope on Saturday, February twenty-fifth, beginning at one PM at the William Hicks Anderson Community Center. Just buzzing with a lot of activity this weekend. It's the Festival of Hope Job Fair and Community Partners Exhibits. There's going to be free food giveaways, distribution of new clothes, shoes, and supplies. But that's not all. There will be a free delicious soul food dinner for all in attendance, and admission is free. This is also an expungement clinic. You do have to pre-register if you can for the free one-on-one session regarding expungement and pardons. And um we have some information that we can share with you. You go to reachgospelradio.com. Reachgospelradio.com, that is where you can register. And in addition, all expungement processing fees will be paid. I want to give you a list of some of the places that will be there, that will be recruiting if anyone needs um to change careers or looking for a job. Caring Angels, which is home care, Christina School District, Everyone Can Achieve More, which is uh job opportunities within the construction field. Uh, we spoke about the expungement. Newcastle County will be there. Uh, the Delaware Criminal Justice Information Services, Habitat for Humanity, Happy Hands and Feet Kids Transportation, uh, which gets uh students back and forth to school. The Kenny Family Foundation, the ShopRites of Delaware, they will also be doing some job placement. Uh, Life is Delicious, uh, there'll be help, uh, lie heap, low-income heating and energy assistance for those who need it. Uh, Stand By Me will be there and Twins Community Distribution and Tova Community Health. So it should be a great event for the community to come out and get those resources. Again, that'll be this Saturday. Um, also just want to, I guess our next meeting will be the March second. So we'll be kicking off Women's History Month, and we'll talk about all the great activities going on around that. But that is it for this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Mills?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to invite the community out um next Tuesday, February twenty-eighth at six PM. There will be a Black History Program also at the William Hicks Anderson Community Center. It is free and open to the public, so come on out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy?
Yes, um, Mr. President, this Saturday at the Wilmington Public Library, there will be the Second Annual Spending Black Matters. Um, Spending Black Matters is uh for aspiring entrepreneurs or anyone that is an entrepreneur. There will be business workshops throughout the day, starting at one thirty with the Business Fund Academy, um, talking about how to fund your business. Then at three o'clock, there will be how to scale your business. And True Access Capital will host a workshop um at four thirty, uh, Small Business Resources and Access to Capital. This is being sponsored by um Influencers Lab Media, Nudie Felton and Malcolm Coley, True Access Capital Wilmington Alliance, the city. Um, and their uh Cornerstone West, CDC, and other partners. There will also be vendors throughout the day, starting at one, uh, twelve PM. So local entrepreneurs will have um their, their um table set up in the library. So if you have time to stop by and support some of our local entrepreneurs, that we'd be selling their items, stop into the library this Saturday. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just want to uh to thank everyone who has joined us this evening for, for tonight's meeting, who, whether it is virtually or in chambers. Again, you're always welcome to, to come and speak and give public comment either in chambers or virtually. Uh, you know, I definitely want to thank everyone who came and, and did give public comment. I want to thank those who are recognizing, who are recognized for um making changes in your schedule and coming last minute. I want to thank you for that too. And also particularly want to thank uh Priscilla, uh, who gave public comment on um just what the community expects from, from council. And I know that we have come a long way uh from, from last session. I think that we are doing a, a much better job as far as showing respect for one another and for the community especially. But I do want to apologize. I know I already apologized to my colleagues. I apologize to the staff. I do want to apologize to the community uh for my part in not always being uh what the community wants to see. And so, and for that, I do accept my, my part in that. And again, I apologize. I just want us all to be able to um just be better. And, and we don't, we're not always going to agree, and I don't expect us to ever do so. But I think that we have to um present, present ourselves in, in a way that the community will always respect us as, as a body. And I know I should, I don't, I don't regret my feelings. My, I feel the way I felt about what I was talking about, but I know I should have presented that much, much differently. And I just hope that we all are able to, to talk to each other in a respectful way and be um, be agreeable, even though we don't always agree. I think that's very important for us as a body and especially as we notice tonight for, for the community uh as they see us. And so for that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been probably moving second to adjourn. All in favor, uh, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.